Tuesday, July 26, 2022, meeting of the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission. We have a couple of items to go over before we officially get started. This meeting is live on Comcast Local Channel 27 and on the Pacific Coast TV, PCT TV's website. As many of, there are some members of the community in attendance this evening, and everyone in attendance has the opportunity to speak. A review for the attendees, the Planning Commission Chair, or in this case Acting Chair, will open and allow a general public comment prior to specific items being that are on the agenda. The Chair will also open up public comment during each of those specific items listed on the agenda. During that time, those who want, who are wanting to speak will be recognized by raising their virtual icon, hand icon, and I will assist public comment, allowing each person to speak. If you've dialed in this evening by telephone only, you can push star six to mute and unmute your hand, or star nine to raise and unraise yourself. Otherwise, computers, tablets, and iPhones will have an icon or feature that you can press. Three minutes will be given to each of the commenters, and the timer will show up on the screen. Public comment, there was one that I know of that came in a public comment, and that was submitted to the Planning Commission this morning. If there are any other public comments, staff will present that during their, their item. Thank you for your patience during our remote meetings, and I will now hand over this meeting to Acting Chair Hernandez to officially start.
Good evening. Can you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I please get a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Gossett? She's unmuted. Or muted. Here, hold on. I don't know why it's... She's having unmuted, but she, she, oh. I'll, I'll continue. She is present this evening. Commissioner Reddick?
I'm here.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Right here.
And Acting Chair Hernandez?
I am present.
Okay, so Commissioner Warren is absent this evening. So we have four out of the five, and there she is.
Sorry, here.
Okay, no worries. Go ahead.
The next item on the agenda is the approval for minutes from Tuesday, July 12. I was not present for this, so I will need to recuse myself, but we do have, we do have enough folks here to vote on this item. Are there any comments on the minutes from July 12? I'm seeing a shaking of heads. Commissioner Gossett, are you, do you have any comments to add to the? Okay, can I get a roll call vote for approval of the minutes, please?
Yes. Through the Chair, I'd like to move that we approve the minutes.
Oh, sorry.
Do you have a second?
I have a second. I have a second from Commissioner Reddick.
Okay. Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddick?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
Acting Chair Hernandez?
I abstain.
That's right. Okay, motion approved, three, zero, one.
Excellent. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is public comment. For those of you in the public who are attending this meeting, and you would like to make a contribution by speaking for up to three minutes, you may do so as long as it's for, not for one of the items that is already on the agenda. So if you're not talking about the, the property acquisition, 1A, or the housing element, 1B, if there's something else you'd like to speak to the Planning Commission about, now is your opportunity. So please click on to raise your hand, and if you do so, city staff will, we will recognize you and give you a moment to speak. Has anybody raised their hand?
We do have some, and I just wanted to make clear that, starting right now, we will have Spanish interpretation tonight, this evening. So I'm going to begin that currently. I just wanted to let everyone know that we have that available this evening.
Sounds good.
Okay, so going forward, it looks like we have two people raising their hands regarding just public comment. I am, just need one second, I'm sorry. I need to, I would like to accurately provide the timer, and it's just having an extra second or two to come over. So if you just give me one minute, I will be able to get our two, that looks like one, possibly, uh, it's public, two public speakers. So that's just coming over, and I will, there we go. Okay. The first one I have in the queue is, it's Dave Shore, and I will go ahead and allow him to speak his three minutes. I just asked him to unmute. There he goes. Go ahead.
Hi there. Is audio good?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Click the timer. I'm commenting tonight on the Hyatt Hotel Pro, Hotel Proposal and Draft EIR largely because the project applicant, simply put, has not paid attention to feedback that he had been given in the past. Public comment as far back as 2017, also Architectural Advisory Committee meeting in July 2020, a joint study session of the AAC and Planning Commission in September 21, all outlined problems with the massing and size of the project. Here we are nearly a year later, and the applicant presenting the exact same oversized project that we saw last September. She desperately wants you to ignore the elephant of the room, the size, massing, and negative visual impacts of this project. But that's not possible. It has been noted before, and is noted again in sections of city code entered into public record again tonight, that this project is clearly and plainly inconsistent with upwards of a dozen regulatory constraints on the size of development on this particular parcel. I specifically request that these points of inconsistency be a topic of robust discussion at the upcoming study session August 9. I am frankly baffled that the applicant has not chosen some other way of profitably developing this parcel, which does not significantly and unavoidably encroach on legally protected visual resources, the views of our hills. As proposed, whether at 102 or 129 guest rooms, the project runs afoul of so many portions of city code that I do not see any way for Planning Commission to approve it in its current form. In addition to the many sections of city code noted, I would also like to add the following passages extracted from the LCLUP, Chapter 3 on page 36, open quote, "The small-town character is a leading draw for coastal visitors. Upscaling infrastructure to accommodate visitors and growth will be at cross purposes with maintaining the desirability of this area that visitors seek." Close quote. Concisely and eloquently stated, that's game, set, and match. This project is incompatible with development guidelines from the city. Additionally, Policy Section of the LCLUP, Section 3-36, regarding traffic and circulation, open quote, "To the extent feasible, limit the approval of new higher-trip generating development." Close quote. This is clearly a higher-trip generating development in question. There are valid concerns about additional water use in time of drought, traffic impact on emergency vehicle response time, and other concerns. But from a regulatory standpoint, it is the glaring, acknowledged, and unambiguous encroachment upon protective visual resources where this project is clearly inconsistent and cannot be allowed as currently designed. Once visual resources are gone, they cannot be mitigated, replaced, moved, or recreated. Bottom line, what we have here is very simple. The desire of one individual to develop a parcel and make himself some money versus the character, appeal, appearance, and functioning of our town for our 12,000 city residents, the 28,000 people who live on the coast side, and the 3 million people who visit our town every year specifically to experience its scenic beauty. The decision on how to proceed is in your hands, how to apply city code for the benefit of the many, rather than for the benefit of one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shore. Appreciate your feedback on this project. I think city staff has taken notes. Who's the next speaker?
Hang on.
I should mute unless I've been muted.
I will mute you. Okay, next I have is David Pasternak. And you can unmute yourself, sir.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is David Pasternak. I've lived on the coast side for 45 years. My wife was a teacher here for over 30 years. We have strong connections on all levels. First, I want to thank you all for the volunteer work you do. Somebody told me years ago that Half Moon Bay was probably the most contentious community he'd ever worked in, and that was a city manager. Been a city manager in towns that included places going through desegregation fights and developmental issues, probably more severe than ours, our own. So you're going to be attacked from all sides, and I do appreciate the patience you have and the stress that you're under. I think there are going to be major issues here relating to just literal requirements relating to visual barriers and impediments. And I think that, as a prior speaker said, you've been advised of those for a long time now, and I think that there needs to be more attention paid. I'm not going to belabor those issues, but I just wanted to allude to a few things that have been concerns for us all these years. First is, there's a real issue with a development lacking pre-planning for infrastructure. You know it, we know it. We've had neighbors who've had to go over to Needes Creek Road for pregnancy, labor, actually. One, one of our neighbors was about to give birth, and she couldn't get down the highway in over 92 because of the traffic problems we have. You have to examine carefully the infrastructure issues before you get to the point of even considering a development which is going to put more strain on our limited access to over-the-hill and even going up, up the coast highway. The other issue is, today you're dealing with housing issues. We all recognize that there is a critical shortage of housing and problems with people being able to live here as a second-generation coast sider, and also the people who would be staffing this proposed hotel. You haven't been able to solve that problem, or even make a good beginning to that. So I really implore you to consider whether a hotel in an area which already has adequate hotel space should be given priority over housing for our children and also for our workers. I think you have to really redirect your priorities. I understand this is a commercial proposal, but I also know that you're able to negotiate or force a reconsideration of what you're going to be permitting, and put your focus on what we really need right now, because this is not what we really need. So thank you. I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you for your feedback, Mr. Pasternak. Bridget, are there any other speakers for public agenda?
Yes, we have two more, and I'm going to go ahead and bring them over. The next person we have is Catherine Murdoch. And that's going to be followed by Rick Sutherland.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. As I said, I won't be as eloquent perhaps as the former, but I do have a few comments about this. I've lived on the coast for 50 years, so I've seen a lot of changes, some good, some not so good. As regard to the Hyatt issue, we have enough building for tourism. This is a poor usage of our inadequate water supply. Increased traffic in an already congested area, excuse me. Conservation of open space and views of the natural surroundings. No need for more, more low-paying jobs. All of the above need more consideration of the issues that confront the coast side, which are many. The traffic, the crowding, the inability to use our highways during the weekends. All of these need your further consideration, I believe. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murdoch. Appreciate that. And Mr. Sutherland?
Yeah, Rick Southern, Southern, excuse me, excuse me. Rick, Rick Southern will be speaking next.
Hey, Rick.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Hey, Rick. I'm also commenting on the Hyatt Hotel proposal. And the reason I'm commenting tonight is I know it's coming up for serious discussion at the next planning meeting. Fifty years ago, I was an environmental studies student at UC Santa Barbara, and the professor told us that in our lifetime, the coast from Ventura, it was either LA or Ventura to Santa Barbara, would be one long suburb. And that was a pretty unfathomable at the time, because it was mostly open space. And today it's one long suburb. The point being that, once something has developed, there's no reverse. I, I do have great respect for the Planning Commission, for your time, for your commitment, for your expertise. I'm glad you're doing it. I sure as hell couldn't do it. What I've read in Half Moon Bay's long-term development plans and policies, great care has been put into language which requires new developments to be harmonious in scale and character to the surroundings, to be compatible in height and structure to the surroundings, to prioritize protection of views from public places. And unfortunately, I don't think the Hyatt proposal as drafted does any of these. Like the Dunes Project, I think it's anything but harmonious with the surroundings, the small-town character of Half Moon Bay, and the look and the feel of our town. And I fear if it is approved, and as I said, I know you're going to give this serious consideration next meeting, but I just want to get my two cents in. I'm afraid it will be an albatross that we'll all regret for a host of environmental and community issues that have been previously expressed by the other speakers very eloquently. So that's my two cents, and I thank you very much for your service and for your time.
Thank you, Rick. Bridget, are there any other speakers for public comment?
Apologies, unmuted. Uh, no, that's all I see.
Great. Okay, I'm going to then close public comment, and I would like to open public hearing on the first project before us.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioner. It's nice to see you all tonight. I'm Jill Egeus, your Community Development Director. This item is one of a series that you have considered. We do not have a PowerPoint presentation. We would like to give Commissioner Reddick a moment before we get too far into this regarding this general plan performance statement for a property in the West of Railroad area.
Yes, thank, thank you, Director Egeus. I'm, my, my residence is close to the West of Railroad PD, and with an abundance of caution and wishing to avoid even any appearance of conflict of interest, I'm going to recuse myself from this item. So I will mute and turn off my video and come back when you all have finished with this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Going forward, the item before you tonight is, the Planning Commission is needing to consider the general plan conformance through resolution that was provided in your packet for a parcel at, in the West of Railroad Plan Development Area. Parcel number is 064022120. It does not have an address. It is not developed. It is in a natural state, and that is described in your, your report and resolution. The city's intended uses are for your consideration with regards to general plan conformance. The intent, intended use would be to either have it remain as it is or to incorporate it into planning efforts that are underway now or may be in the future, for example, for the Poplar Gateways project area, which includes green infrastructure planning, retreat planning for the coastal trail, natural resource protections, and a number of other provisions. If you have any questions about this item tonight, Catherine Enberg, our city attorney, is here. She can field those along with me and turn it over to you for your consideration.
Rick, you're muted. Commissioner?
Are there any, so there's no, you're not going to show us the map of the site, Jill?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's in your staff report. I can, I can pull that up if you need it, and give me a moment to do that. You can also take public comment on the site, and if there is any.
Okay. I will open the floor for public comment on this item.
I'm saying none.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment, and I'm going to redirect back to my commissioners and see if there are any questions or that they have, clarifying question, they have for city staff. Commissioner Benjamin?
Yeah, thank you, and I appreciate your, I, I did look at the staff report, and I saw the West of Railroad picture extracted from the PUD. I was unclear on where this parcel was within that area, or more specifically, sort of, how much of that PUD does this parcel comprise? And I want to be clear that I'm supportive of the project, but I just want to be clear on where the parcel is.
The parcel is highlighted here, if you're seeing an aerial map. There's a green highlight around this parcel in the West of Railroad Plan Development Area. And it is, if you look at silver, that's the general vicinity of it.
I see. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Commissioner Gossett, do you have any questions? Okay, I'm going to open it up for discussion. Commissioner Benjamin or Commissioner Gossett, do either of you have any comments or feedback on the project? I know, Commissioner Benjamin, you just said you're supportive of it. Is there anything else you'd like to add to the record?
Yeah, I didn't mean to jump the gun there. I certainly was interested in hearing what other people might think. But, you know, when we've looked at other projects that are nearby, we've recognized some of the challenges in this PUD. It's been contested for a long time. The LCP clearly indicates that this is an attractive use. And more specifically, our job tonight is to decide whether it's consistent. And after reading the excellent staff report, I had no concerns at all. So I am, I am strongly prepared to support this.
Very good. Commissioner Gossett?
And yes, I would just like to echo what Commissioner Benjamin said. I'm also supportive of the staff report. They did a fine job of outlining the purpose for this. So I am also supportive. Thank you.
Well, we've got great unanimity amongst our commissioners here. I have nothing else to add. So with that said, can I get a motion?
I move the resolution next in order.
Can I get a second?
Second, I second that.
Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddick? Oh, he's not, he's abstaining, sorry. Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
And Acting Chair Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion approved, three, zero.
Okay, I'm going to close this item, and we are going to move to the next item on our agenda, which is Housing Element Public Outreach Study Session.
Please bring our new housing coordinator into the fold of panelists. Mike, which is in the attendees. I'm looking forward to introducing him to the commission.
Welcome back, Steve.
Welcome, Mike. So tonight, Commissioner, you will be hearing a shared presentation. Mike and I will be taking turns on this. Mike is our new housing coordinator. He's been on board for barely a month. He presented last week to our city council on 555 Kelly, and he will be giving you an update about that tonight, as well as some of the housing element items. Mike has experience in this government, and specifically in housing in the last few years, where he has helped another community realize housing production for affordable units. I can be happier to have him on board. He's a coast-site resident. He lives in El Granada with his family, and he's producing a new baby girl. And he's also a dog person, so Mike just fits right in with our fold, and you'll be seeing quite a bit of him as we work our way through the housing element. And with that, Mike, do you mind? I'll go say hi to them in a second. If you wouldn't mind sharing the presentation. I think we're ready. Great, and so I'm just going to introduce this item for a moment. And we have a series of housing updates for the commission. Next slide, please. And specifically, we've been working on the housing element, and we want to share with you where we are with that. And in your packet, you receive um in your packet, you received some of the detailed outreach information and Mike will be reviewing that with you. Um, he'll be covering um regional housing needs allocation once again because you can't hear enough about it. And then I'm going to uh come back and talk to you about the sites inventory work that we've been doing since we saw you in a joint session format back on November ninth in twenty twenty one. And then we will uh shift over and Mike will give you the update about the five 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 Kelly site. And now it's time for me to uh turn it over to Mike to get away. I'm welcome.
Bill, for that introduction and uh good evening, Acting Chair Hernandez and planning commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening and happy to share some of uh the city's efforts on the housing element update. So I'll jump right in. Uh, so the community outreach uh is a very large component of the uh housing element uh update process. Um, and, and here on the, this slide is just a general overview. Um, also included in the staff report uh attachments uh as well in more detail. Uh, but that being said, the city council and planning commission participated. Um, uh, there was a joint, joint meeting as well as uh listening sessions uh with a total of approximately a hundred and sixty three attendants, and that was over the course of five meetings. Um, city staff also uh worked uh on, on focus group meetings, uh one with senior coast siders and another with Alas, uh both having attended attendees. Uh, and the Alas uh focus group also included uh several school aged children uh that provided staff with, with feedback. Staff also reached out to uh stakeholders and service agencies uh listed here, uh just to name a few abundantly. Boys and Girls Club, uh Hip Housing, Habitat Humanity, uh and Housing Choices as well. Uh, and, and most importantly, we wanted to focus and highlight uh for the commission this evening uh some key takeaways uh that, that staff um received during, during uh the outreach process. Uh, so, so the first uh key takeaway is, is that farm workers cannot afford stable housing uh within half moon day. Um, a common theme throughout the coastside region. Um, most farm workers are, are making uh in the twenty thousand dollar per year uh range, plus or minus um a few thousand uh potentially, but realistic uh as far as, as far as what income categories, and I'll go into more detail um later in the presentation about uh the acutely low and extremely low income and what those uh ranges represent. But uh most farm worker households do fall into our lowest uh income categories. Um, another common theme amongst this population is that uh due to the the low earnings per year, um certain uh housing uh is, is hard to find and, and thus we've given our high cost of living in the area. Um, substandard living conditions are, are somewhat common throughout uh throughout this uh populations, uh living, living uh circumstances. Um, so that was a, a common theme. Uh, the next uh really segues from that substandard living conditions uh into overcrowded housing. Uh, this is a, a repeating theme and a, a huge C takeaway um that staff um heard from, from multiple stakeholders and participants in outreach process. Uh, most commonly, we'll have multiple households uh living in, in single, in a single family uh unit. Uh, parents and children often sharing one room and thus uh sleeping arrangements are a little less than I, than ideal, not enough room uh for enough beds in, in many circumstances and insured facilities like kitchens and restrooms. Um, having a dozen night shifts uh just for the use and, and the, the shifts for use of kitchens and restrooms. Uh, we heard from multiple uh parti- or participants in outreach process that uh that, that comes into play when you have multiple families sharing one kitchen. Uh, that being said, city, city staff um heard, heard pretty personal stories um that were shared with us. Um, and we, we appreciate all the feedback uh throughout the outreach process for those individuals that, that were willing to, to share with us. Um, that being said, uh we've gathered that uh living conditions are, are creating chronic health conditions, especially given the, the recent pandemic. Uh, and, and continuing uh, you know, to, to move our way out of the pandemic um as things move forward. Um, and then also concerns for the development and education of, of kids who are living in this situation. Uh, not enough room for, for study um and, and typically outdoor uh mostly kids in these, these situations sadly do not have uh like a backyard per se or, or typical backyard. That being said, uh, other, other key takeaways uh that, that city staff gathered uh legal subleases and price gouging uh are also uh what we shared with staff. Uh, this, this greatly affects residents in the community that uh are unable to uh with limited identification or, or unable to, to build uh a credit history. Uh, as most of you know, during the apartment background check process, uh, you know, credit history um is, is part of that. Uh, so finding housing for this population uh can be difficult. Uh, that being said, uh folks are having to search for housing uh in different forms, whether it's renting a room. Uh, sometimes these rooms are rented uh subleased essentially without a landlord's consent. Uh, and, and thus leads to some, some unlawful uh rental practices. Uh, we have folks who have stated that they've been ev- evicted um and, and given rent increases uh that are have, you know, under normal circumstances and that when a tenant has a typical lease signed, um, and a legal binding contract. You know, there's, there's actions that a tenant can take. Um, however, in, in these situations, uh tenants uh who are, don't have a formal lease or unable to uh create, are able to um take legal action essentially. More affordable housing was a, a very common theme, uh often described as a, an emergency and that um needing affordable housing built as soon as possible. Uh, we believe that especially with illegal subleases and, and price gouging, um, that these uh affordable housing is a potential solution to some of the concerns that were raised. Uh, teachers and essential workers uh cannot afford to stay uh within half moon day. We've heard from many individuals who either have family members or someone they know uh directly that uh is having trouble either remaining in half moon day due to uh high cost of living in the area, um and that just wages have not kept up with that cost of living. Uh, often uh folks who cannot afford to stay in the area, have longer commutes and are, are traveling further distances. Uh, this uh last uh piece here uh is something that we've, we've heard from our affordable housing developer community. Um, that the land and building costs have increased exponentially uh and that developers, affordable housing developers specifically, uh are typically needing to pursue larger multi, multifamily development projects uh where they can uh reach a certain threshold, threshold to uh capture uh and, and essentially increase the feasibility via tax credits um as well as different stack financing structures. So definitely complicated uh piece of building the affordable housing. That affects uh every, every city in the, in the area, not just half moon day. Uh, our existing affordable housing inventory, we wanted to highlight uh that has been built over the last uh fifty years. Essentially, uh we have a total of four hundred and twenty four affordable units uh throughout the city, and these are deed restricted uh units. Uh, the most recent being the coast house, which uh is mostly focuses on transitional housing. And I won't spend too much time there. Uh, the, the San Antonio County income limits are the uh just wanted to highlight this uh for you all and, and any members of the public that are, that are listening, there's often a, a misconception of uh who qualifies for uh low income housing. Uh, so I wanted to highlight this for the, the commission and, and members of the public. Uh, so just one example for a family of four, um low income, which is eighty percent AMI, which is the area median income. Uh, the, the maximum there uh would be a hundred and forty nine thousand a year. Uh, we, we take these in income brackets, so at the low end uh to qualify for low income housing, which would be the fifty one percent to eighty percent AMI. It would be above the ninety two thousand two hundred number for a family of four and below one hundred and forty nine thousand. Uh, that is definitely much greater than other counties throughout the state uh due to our high cost of living um and, and wages in certain industries being quite high. Uh, you'll also see maximum rents that you can expect for affordable uh units, and, and these uh numbers here for the maximum rents are, are typically based off of thirty percent of the in the world of affordable housing, you don't want someone spending more than thirty percent of their income uh toward their housing expenses, and that would include uh utilities as well. And I'm happy to bring this slide back up if, if it's ever muted. Uh, as, as Jill mentioned earlier, our regional housing needs assessment, also referred to as our RINA. Uh, this is the state mandated number of units that the city uh is required to produce. Uh, total units in the last cycle is two hundred and forty. As you'll see, uh, the state has taken a different approach, uh a little bit different in regards to uh the income categories and how many units are in each category. So uh as you'll see in the above moderate for cycle five, which is twenty fifteen to twenty twenty three, there was a hundred and twenty one units, uh whereas cycle six, it's only an increase of twenty units. Um, and then if you look on the opposite end of the spectrum, the state is definitely highlighting and, and uh pushing for, for lower affordability uh income categories and those numbers of units that need to be produced by for all cities uh throughout the state. So uh this will be a a repeating theme throughout the state for all communities needing to produce more of the very low and low incomes. As you can see, there's a much higher increase uh in those two categories, being fifty two for cycle five and for very low and the one hundred and eighty one for cycle six, similarly for, for the low income category as well. So I'm gonna hand it back off to Jill and then I will uh share some uh information about five 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 Kelly uh momentarily after uh Jill has an opportunity to run through some of the sites inventory.
Thank you, Mike. Um, I just, I do want to acknowledge also with Mike on his very first day um at the city, he um went to a focus group meeting with me at Alas after work and so uh this really hands-on intimate outreach is quite different than what uh the commission um oversaw with the land use plan update, which is why we're trying to make sure that you have some time with um pretty detailed transcribed notes and um because you, you haven't been participating in it uh the way that, that staff has and you just want to make sure that you're really really um immersed in it. Um, so now, moving, moving on to sites, uh back in November, uh we had a joint work session with city council. And uh, a good part of that meeting, um, we reviewed sites um for inclusion in the housing element sites inventory. And we did that in quite a bit of detail and we had them uh categorized by um uh town center sites. Um, those are mostly infill development sites. Uh, the farm worker housing sites are the workforce housing overlay that we um tend to uh shorten up to, to who for workforce housing overlay. Uh, we talked about plan developments, uh the city's two mobile home parks and some public owned sites. And what I'm wanting to do tonight is to confirm with you where we're going with the sites, um what uh what kind of analysis that's taken place and a few changes that we're finding that we need to make uh so that you're not surprised when this comes back to you. So this is just checking in and letting you know how things are going um for all these um housing sites that you saw previously. Um, also, uh, back in November, when we, we summed them all up, we, we had about a thousand potential units that could be developed on the sites and that was um covering a, arena of four hundred and eighty units. Since that time, we have whittled this down to the um what are, in our opinion, the highest priority, highest quality, most appropriate to develop, uh most resource rich from the perspective of um HCD, our, our housing and community development. Uh, folks over at the state, they are looking for sites that are good places to live and build housing and create neighborhoods. So um we've, we're not going to bring you an inventory with a thousand um sites in it uh for a thousand units anymore. It's gonna be hummed down, but it will have a buffer of at least twenty percent over the RINA, which is something that HCD has been requiring. Um, so this is how we've been thinking about our sites, basically from the land use perspective. Uh, next slide. Um, in, in the housing element, uh the sites will be presented a little bit differently. Um, HCD is looking at them as sites that are um pipeline projects where there's a, a project that's already at some point in the development review process. For example, uh, they've made an application for a preliminary review um in advance of coming in for a coastal development permit. Or maybe they've um already, um, they're, they're close to coming to the planning commission or it's already been approved and it's a building permit, it's under construction. In any case, it's somewhere in the permit review pipeline and the project has not been completed. So it is um an open pipeline project. Then uh we are also allowed to count accessory dwelling units based on the most recent three years of activity. And we're going to be able to count about a hundred accessory dwelling units against the RINA, which is incredibly helpful considering uh that equity uh distribution shift that Mike pointed out to you for the uh very low and low income categories. And then uh the key vacant and non vacant sites, and those are the ones that I think we've spent the most time talking about. And uh you'll see um uh both pipeline and uh key vacant and non vacant sites. Uh, just a little uh, it's now in, in the next few slides based on our land use categories. Next slide, please. Uh, so town center sites, uh there are uh numerous sites in the town center. They have um under private ownership, uh lots of different zoning districts involved. And uh we are looking at both um vacant and what are called non vacant sites. So for example, the site on the left at Stone Pine Road is a vacant site and it has uh commercial general uh zoning and is considered to be a really favorable housing, uh housing site. It's fairly flat. It's really well located. It's a nice size. Uh, the site um over on Charisma is right behind the library and on the bike is um in about East Port Landing. This site is non vacant. It has a few units on it now. However, it does not um come to the maximum density that will be allowed under the land use plan, which put this site into the high density land use designation. So this is a um, a good example of a site that could take on more units. Um, it's a site where we are aware of some uh potential developer interest, which is also uh something that HCD is really interested in. They want sites that are going to work. Uh, next category, please. Um, so updating on the workforce housing overlay sites. Um, we're going to focus primarily on sites where we have really active property owner interest in um putting some workforce housing overlay units forward. Um, this overlay is combined with all kinds of underlying land uses. So the site on the left is currently in the um rural coastal land use designation. It's a new land use designation. And um the property owner has submitted a preliminary application and the site has a capacity for up to seven units and the developer is actually working with uh city staff and a consultant and San Antonio County. uh, city staff and a consultant in Seminole County for, um, the, uh, county's farm worker housing loan program. And so we're, uh, looking forward to bringing that site forward. That makes it a really viable housing element site, even though it's just a few units there. They're, um, very special passive units, uh, being for farm workers. And I think it's important just, just in this moment to remind us all that, uh, farm worker housing is not only a, a local priority land use, because it's needs to be affordable. Affordable housing is a local priority land use. But farm worker housing is also a coastal act priority use. And this is confirmed by the coastal commission in their certification of your land use plan update. So, uh, that Cabrillo Highway site is, is very consistent with, a coastal act and local coastal land use plan intent. Cabrillo Highway is the Lutheran church site. Um, we would consider this to be a, um, and kind of a partially vacant site, lack of a site is vacant. Uh, we don't have a preliminary application yet, but the, um, owner has been studying the biological resource conditions. And we're finding that there is more green on this property for development than we hadn't anticipated during the land use plan update. So, we're letting you know about that because we intend to bring forward a higher build out than what was included in the land use plan for this site. And, um, we can explain that in detail as this comes forward. But currently, all of these sites are being reviewed by, um, an economic consultant who is looking at them for their, um, financial viability and, uh, some other categories that, um, HCD will be, um, working on. So we're going to wait and accept their guidance about this and, um, update you then. This is just one of the lines I want to put a pin on and just let you know you're going to see a change. Uh, next slide, please. We had talked about plan developments and you will see the Podesta Plan Development, um, as one of these sites in the housing element. It will be the only plan development to be included. It is the only one that is located within town center. We have active, um, owner interest. Uh, we've received some preliminary application materials. And we are in, um, dialogue with the, with the applicant. And we, we find this to be a really important viable site. So that was presented to you in the commission, uh, city council back in November and, um, we, we believe that we have the go ahead to, um, have this site in the inventory. It's a very important one for the inventory because it is large and can have, um, probably one of the highest build outs of any of the, um, properties that we're, we're able to put forth. Um, it would require master planning and of course, there's always opportunities and constraints on every site. Uh, but this one, um, definitely has enough room to not, um, impact any coastal resources, habitat areas, and the like. Um, next category, please. Uh, mobile home parks. So, um, we've talked about this before. Mobile homes are a very important housing type in happening day. Um, I think it's on the order of eight percent of the housing units are mobile homes, um, that's priced of, uh, Canyatta Cove and Hilltop. And both mobile homes have room for expansion and were acknowledged in the local coastal land use plan for such expansion. Uh, both, uh, sites will be, um, acknowledged in the housing element as, uh, appropriate, uh, sites for, uh, development during, during that cycle, uh, the eight year cycle. We're showing you Hilltop though, because we do have a preliminary application and it's moving forward. Uh, the owner has secured thirty two measure D allocations. The site is located within town center. And, um, we're looking forward to processing this quickly. This is a housing forum that, um, frankly, would be, um, well acknowledged and hopefully supportive of the emergency condition that, um, Mike and I, um, we, we agree with the comment that we have heard. It's, it's really, uh, pretty critical. So this site is a priority for us and we're, um, engaged with architecting and engineering. Um, so there's no change here. We presented this to you back in November and you will, you will see this, um, both as a project and in your housing element. Uh, next slide. Uh, this is the last land use category that I'll be presenting. Um, you now look at three, uh, public owned sites. I'm going to present two of them. Um, the school district, um, properties, uh, have the workforce housing overlay on them now from the land use plan update. And the school district has been studying their properties for, um, housing development. And Hatch, where that circle is at the north end of the Hatch School property at the southwest corner of Cabrillo Highway and Kelly. Uh, that was actually already deemed to be surplus lands by the school district. Um, obviously they had some land uses on, on that part of their, uh, Hatch campus that would need to be accommodated, um, elsewhere on that property or elsewhere on another school district property. Um, but they have a pretty light footprint. They're all one story. There's not a lot of development there. And the school district is pursuing, um, an affordable housing development for the north end of the Hatch property. So we, we did present this to you in November and you will see this, um, moving forward in your housing element. Um, the land use plan estimated, uh, about fifty five units with the density bonus, but there's new state density bonus law that is, um, in effect and applies to us, that could, um, get it up to about sixty. And I'll just make a note now, uh, because you're going to hear a little bit more about, uh, increasing densities on a couple other sites. When the land use plan, um, built out was, uh, prepared, we put a lot of extra density bonus units into it, uh, not knowing where they might end up needing to, uh, occur. It was part of our, um, being careful to have enough capacity in the land use plan. So these sites where we are finding that we're probably going to need to raise their ability to, to be built out, there, the number of units that can be built. I want to reassure you that I'm keeping track of how many units that is above, um, what we had estimated for these individual sites. And then making sure that that number fits within the density bonus that we had in, um, looked at for the city. We also have a few sites that we've had to rule out. So, um, there was a, a really neat site that we liked on a post property over by Wavecrest. And, um, unfortunately, it has been damaged in a, in a way that has created wetlands. Um, and Post is, you know, touching on this, but it had room for some workforce housing overlay, um, units, but it's, it's just not going to be, um, foreseeable to move forward. So those units can't happen. So there's, there's, um, sites that are coming out of, uh, what went into the build out as well. So, um, it's, it's part of, um, keeping track of, of the total numbers. And so that's the school district site. And frankly, the Hatch property, um, the district and, uh, city staff, we all agreed that Hatch was, had the best, um, area for housing development. The Clune property is really, really full. And, uh, the high school property, um, really didn't have any, um, nice flat, uh, easy places to, to develop. So, uh, this, this location is, um, the best one for them. And I've got one more to present. Um, this is an update. Uh, so, uh, this is a own property, eight eighty Stone Pine. When we presented this to you back in November, we acknowledged that there were significant constraints on this property. Uh, you saw this most recently, uh, as a commission reviewing the courtyard pro- project up at the, um, eastern end of the property and you approved a coastal development permit and, um, adopted an initial study of mitigated negative declaration, uh, for, uh, including the conservation corridor on that property. City council heard the item as well. And, um, made, made a, an adjustment in the conservation corridor, but, uh, you've seen this in quite a bit of detail. And, uh, some of the things that were challenges here, obviously were environmental constraints, which, um, you know, pillars of those creek, the pond, um, whether or not frogs are still, um, breeding in that pond they had in the past. And, um, working out the details on the conservation corridor as recommended by, uh, Dr. Mark Jennings, um, brought us a long way to being able to create a housing site on the western end of the property that we didn't know would be possible when we were working on the land use plan. Uh, other things that we are evaluating are the, um, detonation, uh, potential from the pillars of spam. And we have a lot of positive updates on that. And financing and we're, we're working through that as well. And so there's, uh, it's moving much more positively than we thought it would back in November and we're going to keep working on that. Um, there's at least four acres available here. Our downtown density is on the order of thirty units to the acre. So you will see a build out on the order of a hundred and twenty units on this property for affordable housing and only affordable housing, no market rate housing. Um, because, uh, next slide. Uh, the next steps for this property would require us to, in addition to completing that feasibility analysis, require a land use plan amendment to add the workforce housing overlay to this, this side. We did not put it on this property during the land use plan update because one, uh, the city didn't own it. And two, we, we did not know that we could overcome the environmental constraints. And so now that we, we can do that, uh, council has perfected us to proceed to enable this type of housing. And we're not sure what their direction will be for, um, proceeding with it. But it's possible they may, um, have us go out with an RFQ kind of process, which Mike will be, um, reviewing with you in a few minutes, um, with the five 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 Kelly. So you can see how that might work. Um, so that, that's a big, that's probably the biggest update, um, we have for you on, um, sites that might look different than what you saw in the land use plan and where we left it back in November. Next slide. So, um, we are really working hard to pull this housing element together. We got behind. We, we've struggled with, um, some, uh, real challenges this year with, uh, staffing and frankly, with consultant support. When all the, um, all the jurisdictions are doing housing elements at the same time. And, um, it's, it's really hard to get enough, um, consultants support. We actually have three working with us right now, including the environmental review consultants. So, uh, so we're, we're doing everything we can. But now that I have Mike on board, we're diligently and dutifully, um, writing our sections and, uh, you can see the primary topics of them. Uh, tonight you saw a sneak peek for the public engagement piece. I'm currently wrapping up constraint section. The housing needs assessment is in very good shape. Um, we have our sites under evaluation and there are some new requirements for housing elements now as well. Um, regarding affirmatively furthering their housing, this is, um, law and we need to demonstrate that this is going to occur. And then we've also, um, prepared a, um, an evaluation of cycle five, um, accomplishments, which are pretty significant from a policy perspective, but, um, have been really, um, really disappointed with regards to adoption. And, um, this is something that we need to overcome in, in cycle six of them. And that, uh, wraps our update on the housing element. Once we get our, uh, site information back from our consultants, um, we've been, we've been waiting for some time. We will come back to you with a real firm schedule, but I'm not, I'm not comfortable doing that while that's, um, in flux. Uh, the element is due, um, to be adopted, um, mid-January and there is a grace period in the spring. Uh, we anticipate we'll need to use the grace period, but we are, um, we're going to do our best to meet our deadlines. And so, um, this is our segue now to the last, um, the other city site that you will see in the housing element as a pipeline. And, uh,
Jill, can, can I actually ask to just take a pause here for a second? Cause we've covered a lot of content in the first half of the presentation. I just want to, uh, poll my colleagues and see, do you, do you want to press forward with this and ask questions at the end? Or do you want to pause and ask questions now in the first half of the presentation? Not hearing anyone clamoring to pause, we'll just push forward.
Commissioner Benjamin and Riddick have their hands raised.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, I can't see you.
It's okay.
Yeah, I'm happy to, um, have staff continue.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yeah, I'm just jotting down my questions as we go. So I'll just,
Okay.
continue, but I appreciate the consideration.
Okay, very good. Just want to also make sure everyone's awake. All right, Jill. Then everybody's attentive, everybody's attentive now and they're afraid of being called upon. So, uh, let's go ahead and continue.
All right, I'll, I'll be, uh, thank you, I can share Hernandez. I'll, I'll be, uh, continuing this next portion and I promise this is, uh, just a few slides to, uh, the commission on, on where we're at. So, um, didn't want to inundate you with, with, uh, I know this is a lot of information in front of you this evening, but wanted to provide a quick update on the five 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 Kelly Avenue. Uh, it's a city-owned affordable housing site and I will get some background about the RFQ process. So that's the request for qualifications, uh, proposals. Uh, this was released by the city on February fifteenth of twenty twenty-two and the deadline, uh, was extended two weeks, uh, to have a final, uh, submitted submission date of May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. Uh, multiple nonprofit, uh, affordable housing developers were solicited, uh, and, and due to some of the constraints on the site, uh, given, given the size, and I'll go into more detail on that on the next slide. Uh, we, the city only received one proposal. Um, that proposal was a, a joint proposal by Mercy Housing and Alas. Um, it's a, affordable housing, uh, for farm workers. Um, all farm workers, uh, would be included. Although in some of the marketing, uh, there would be a, a target towards some senior, uh, farm workers. Um, but all farm workers would be, uh, inclusive of the, the project. Uh, it, it would include a resource center which would be managed by Alas. Um, in front of you now is, uh, the city-owned site, uh, that was included in the RFQ. So the five 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 Kelly Avenue property, which the city purchased in, uh, twenty seventeen, which is a single family home and adjacent, uh, parking lot, uh, which is part of the Ted Adcock Community Center, uh, would be included. So roughly twenty, uh, thousand square feet, uh, for the site itself. And, uh, given, given the area, um, as I mentioned on, on previous slides, um, many developers, uh, in order to, to reach certain tax credit financing and, um, other financing sources, um, have to, to reach a certain number of units. So, um, I'll go into more detail about the proposal that we received, um, that was, was given the site constraints. So it's part of the reason that the city only received one proposal. So, uh, the joint proposal received is a forty unit affordable housing development. It would be a mix of one bedroom and studios, as mentioned, uh, with a focus on farm worker housing. Uh, the farm worker resource center, uh, will be staffed and managed by Alas, which is where, um, their partnership with Mercy Housing comes into, uh, the, the partnership for the project. Uh, the, the proposed development would be four stories, uh, the, uh, and my understanding is that as a, uh, a loud potential, uh, there, there would be some re-zoning that needs to take place, but there is a pathway forward on the workforce housing overlay. Uh, the parking that is included in the proposal has fifteen spaces with potential for lifts for added supply, um, as well as interior bike parking, uh, as well as the, uh, uh, additional. for added supply, as well as interior bike parking, as well as the additional residence moving in the open space. And that would be separate from the resource center, so that would be shared space for residents of the property as well as a management office. And all of the rental management that would be led by Mercy Housing, as well as the construction of the project as well. But Allos would definitely come into, into the support of the construction process throughout the marketing for tenants. So as far as the need and that exists in the community, so I know on an earlier slide, I mentioned the San Antonio County area median income. So just focusing on a, on a single person, the AMI, the median is a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars per year. That's the median income for a single person in the county. So that's quite high when you compare it to what a typical farmworker earns, which is, as earlier mentioned, as part of the housing element update slides, is roughly twenty thousand per year. The average studio and one-bedroom rents, from what staff has researched, average around two thousand a month. There may be some units that are lower and some that are significantly higher. But those, the availability of those units is, there isn't much stock out there. So that creates a problem for this specialized population. Typically, only mids, as mentioned, twenty thousand per year. So that's specific for the acutely low and extremely low. Acutely low is a new income category that HCD added, although we haven't seen focused affordable housing development projects focused on that income category, because it is a new income category that is still being identified as part of their area median income in counties throughout California. So extremely low is the sixteen to thirty percent, which would be roughly seventeen to thirty-nine thousand for a one-person household. So our assumption is that farmworkers, the average being twenty thousand per year, are going to land somewhere in acutely low and extremely low per year for their income. I've included the rents here, and that's what would be affordable for a single person within that income range, and that's, that's based on the high end of that income category. So for acutely low, someone making seventeen thousand a year, an affordable rent would be four hundred and thirty-six dollars per month. Next steps, and this is the status update I wanted to provide to the planning commission. City Council by resolution on July nineteenth, just last week, authorized staff to begin preparations for an EMA exclusive negotiations agreement, and this will be for pre-development activities, which will identify the roles and responsibilities, additional site plans, definitely a lot more specifics, as well as milestones and timelines, as you see listed here, as well as potential pre-development funding loan, which staff will prepare that agreement and will be assessing the need there as far as what type of, how much funding and so forth. So that's something the staff will be working with Mercy Housing to identify, and then will return to city council for approval. Last week was really step one, and a vital component of Mercy Housing, having support from city council. So that item was approved, four zero one, with one council member accused, but did receive unanimous approval for the voting members of council last week. So that'll be, next steps for Mercy Housing is that they'll be pursuing additional funding sources with this indication of this first step of support in the city, and then we'll be creating a community outreach plan in partnership with Allos. And I don't have a timeline yet on when that'll return to city council, but staff is evaluating that. And with that, that's the end of our presentation. I'm happy to bring up slides that's helpful during the commission's questions. And again, pleasure being here this evening, and we'll be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr., how do you pronounce your last name?
Noche, so as if there were an H, but there is no H.
Thank you, Mr. Noche. It's easy to remember because my dad was a nacho, and anyway, I've got something to key it into, Mr. Noche. Thank you. And again, that was a great presentation from, from both of you. I think we've kind of changed up the format of doing things a little bit here. We've sort of opened the door to public comment at this point in the past. And so I'm going to go to that new protocol, and I'm going to open up our meeting for public comment. So Bridget, are there any, any folks who raised their hand and have indicated they would like to make comments on this item?
Yes, we have Dave Shore so far.
Okay, let's start with Mr. Shore, please.
Hi, folks, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I'm not bored yet, so amazing and detailed presentation, recognizing the need for affordable housing. I certainly didn't plan this, but it actually dovetails with some of the concerns raised by speakers on the Hyatt project. And I do believe that things are possible when, you know, it's not just asking for a pony here, but wouldn't it be lovely if the owner of the Hyatt parcel could be persuaded that the highest and best use of that parcel would be for very low-income housing development instead, at a height compatible with city regulations to preserve the visual resources? Just saying, that's a topic for additional discussion. It's obviously, I know this is a topic near and dear to members of both the city council and the planning commission, and the need for housing is acute. I'm speaking personally, but I'm also treasurer for Friends of the Library, and I can tell you that in our, what we've been funding over the past couple of years, besides literacy and outreach, we've been providing meals for families that are hungry. If you don't have good kitchen facilities, you can't eat. If you can't eat and you're hungry, you can't learn. So this all, you know, the housing needs really speak to large societal issues, and I'd prefer to see the Hyatt parcel stay vacant, but failing that, putting it to a use that is actually of, you know, tangible value to the community would be really nice. More on that later, but just a quick reaction to Mr. Noche's presentation on the five fifty-five Kelly. Again, being consistent with other comments I've made, looking at a four-story building with obviously some enhancements on the roof line for elevator shafts, something, and awnings and whatnot. What I understand to be height limits in the downtown would need to be changed. My first very quick gut reaction is there's not enough parking. And again, a building of that blocky nature of that height downtown is likely to get some comment, let's say. And I understand the density requirements of developers, but three stories might work a heck of a lot better from an aesthetics standpoint, even if it doesn't house quite as many people. It looks like you do have a good number of sites in other areas that might be able to absorb things. Jill said there was maybe potentially a thousand units available through all parcels, and you're, you're trying to choose the best for your four hundred and eighty required units over the next eight years. So, you know, great presentation from staff, and it dovetails with what we, you know, what do we want this town to look like? And who do we serve here? Developers or the people? Thanks.
Thank you for your feedback again, Mr. Shore. Bridget, do we have anybody else? Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the planning commission for clarifying questions and discussion. And my display here is a little wonky. Commissioner Gossett, do you have any clarifying questions or feedback?
I do have some questions. So, and it's probably, the questions are most likely due to the fact that I'm new to this entire process. So Jill or Mike, I wanted to know, the sites that you identified, are they currently zoned to accommodate the housing element, or would they need to be rezoned? That's one question. And if you want, do you want me to just go through my list, or do you want to? Okay. And then the next question, I read in the San Francisco Chronicle that ninety-seven percent of housing element plans presented from the southern part of the state have been rejected, and I just wanted to know if you know why and what your thinking is on that. And number, one more question, would hatch require measure D allocations? And then my final question is, I, I just wondered if I heard correctly, did the mobile Hilltop Park already receive thirty-two measure D allocations? And if so, when?
The Acting Chair, should we do these in little batches? I can cover all these right now, and then Mike can back up a little bit on them.
Do you want to start answering these questions, and then we'll go through?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
I can, sorry, I was having some problems.
Okay. So the question about zoning for the identified sites, some of the sites are already zoned as needed to be. All of them, with the exception of Stone Pine, have land use designations at support housing. So this was anticipated in the land use plan update, where frankly, trying to fit at least two cycles of arena into the build out for that plan. And so we're focusing in on the most likely to develop sites that are concentrated in the town center or on workforce housing overlay sites. And those were the focus of council, who define the town center area. But the zoning is trailing. So we will have, you know, we've had Acting Chair Hernandez ask us about the status of the implementation plan for the local coastal land use plan update. It is going to follow the housing element, and the plan for that will be to cover the zoning changes needed for both the local coastal land use plan, which will also happen to cover the housing element with some pretty minor adjustments. And then the one big change with respect to the stone pine. So I hope that answers your question. And if you're, if you want to know about any of the particular sites, we can let you know how there's any news. I'm going to skip over the rejection of all these housing elements. We are learning about this, and we'll, we will answer your question broadly, but we may have to come back to you on it. Patch, yes, hatch would require measure D allocations. The only units that are exempt from measure D are replacement housing units. So that's, for example, if somebody has a house and they intend to, maybe it's small and they want to replace it with a new structure, they don't need a measure D allocation. It's a one-for-one. And then density bonus. Density bonus is an incentive for the development of affordable housing. Projects that include market rate units with, let's say there's ten market rate units and twenty percent of those need to be affordable, so two of them are affordable, that could qualify the project for a density bonus, perhaps of another couple market rate units, and those density bonus units would be exempt from measure D. Oddly, it's the market rate density bonus units that are exempt, not the affordable units. So yes, the way measure D is drafted at this time, allocations would be required. Hilltop Mobile Home Park has thirty-two allocations. They got twenty last year in the twenty twenty-one. There were some, anyway, they got, they got about half of them last year and about half of them this year. And last year, there were some left in downtown. Hilltop is located in that defined downtown area, and the downtown bonus allocations cannot be outside of downtown. All of the remaining in December or December. And then they got the rest of their allocations through the process that you just, you just went through for the outside of downtown, but they were in downtown, and so they picked up the rest in twenty twenty-two. Back to those housing elements. So Mike and I are working with the Twenty One Elements Group that you read about in that draft piece of housing element document as a collaborative that supports all the jurisdictions in San Antonio County. Twenty One Elements is supported by housing consultants who work with A-BAG, HCD, all of us, and they monitor what's going on. And so they've been reading the letters that the jurisdictions are receiving, where their housing elements are not being accepted by HCD. And we're learning about the revisions that are required. And a housing element being rejected doesn't, it's not a final determination. Cities have a chance to make revisions and resubmit. So there's, there's a process of review. Redwood City has already submitted their housing element to HCD in this cycle. The Southern California cities are ahead of us in their cycle. Redwood City is the first city to get their element into HCD from San Antonio County. They got their letter back, and Twenty One Elements and everyone else is reading it, because we will have the same reviewers, and we're learning about what they're looking for. So we should be able to have more detail on that later. It's really important to watch it, and we appreciate your strategic thinking and questioning
Commissioner Benjamin, do you have any additional clarifying questions or feedback?
I do, and I, I really appreciated the presentation. The slides did go by a little bit fast for me, not that I want to go back and look at them tonight, but it would be helpful to have copies of them. So if it's all right with you, my first request is to have copies of them. I wanted to focus on a few, I think, straightforward questions, but I, but maybe they're more nuanced. And Mike, one of the points you made was that in, that we were required to produce. That was, that was a term you used in your presentation. And I wanted to get clarity, because it's very possible that, I mean, you guys are up to date with HCD regulations and the rules. My impression in prior terms is that the definition of produce was arcane, was a term of art. And there would be a distinction between the plain concept of, I think, the period we start looking and we start counting houses that are actually built, or that people are in, or have approvals. And that would be different from, do we have the zoning and the facilities without doing something that might be perceived as coercive to a particular developer? So can you touch briefly on what the standard is when it becomes time for us to decide whether we produce? Are we actually counting units, or are we counting land that's zoned properly for units?
I'm happy to jump in and answer that question. Okay, great. So it's definitely a great question, Commissioner Benjamin, and I appreciate you asking it. So, so HCD does, so on the question of requiring the production of housing, this, it is a state requirement, essentially, as far as, I know, begs the question of what happens if we do not produce that amount of housing? And that, that's still, we're still learning about what, what the consequences are to that. I can state that just observing what the practices have been at the state legislature just observing what the practices have been at the state legislature is uh with, with new housing laws like SB nine and SB ten, SB three thirty, which is streamlining law, doesn't necessarily apply and have to stay on SB three thirty, but uh it is not necessarily fully relinquishing local control, but it is giving less control to local jurisdiction. So I, I don't know that the state wh- where, what that threshold will be if, if we do not produce our, our housing. That would be um something that we could um, you know, definitely work with our, our legal counsel to, to assess. But uh for all intensive pur- purposes, uh the, the state is requiring basically a, a deeper focus during this cycle of the housing element. So um I, I don't wanna go into uh weed into areas that we're still assessing currently, that staff's still assessing in, in those different sections of the, the housing element. Uh but they are in much greater detail in analysis in this cycle, and that is, is a requirement that the city has to, to return uh to the state. Um and that, that, those are comments that we're expecting to receive on what our, our strength is as far as what those, it's if we're meeting the, the needs that uh the state is, is outlining essentially. I, I can, I'll, I'll, I'll stop there, cuz I don't wanna uh get too wordy, but uh happy to answer most specifics on, on that topic.
Yeah, I mean, so I'll put my concerns in uh in a sharp point. Um I'm, I'm supportive of improving our affordable housing stock. Um at the same time, I wanna be sure I understand what the goalposts are. Um at one level, as a city, of course, it would be nice to realize those goals. Another is to understand whether these regulations reach in and tell us that if we haven't actually got those buildings built and people occupying them, that we haven't produced. It's hard for me to believe that that's the standard, to be quite honest, but maybe it is. And I wanna be sure I understand so that when we use that term, it's not misconstrued to mean something that it doesn't mean. Second, you mentioned just in your comments that uh some things might not apply to happen, and that segues to another question that I would like to get clarity on, which is, um as you know, we are in the coastal zone entirely. And the coastal zone provides for a couple of other priorities. The facilitation of um uh visitor access and the protection of coastal resources. And that is a matter of constitutional law. It's very fundamental to California. I don't think it would get overturned by statute. Um and what I want to understand is whether um we have clarity in the HCD regulations or the statutes that enforce them, whether we are being asked to compromise on either of those two points, or our job is to maintain consistency with those requirements at the same time we're providing. Uh we're producing whatever produces means in this context. Can you help me understand that, please?
Sure, and I'm, I'm gonna, I will hand it off to Jill. I just wanna, I, I will preface that uh in, in the sites evaluation, that is a requirement from HCD that the city uh has to undertake and include in our housing element. And that, that identifies sites, and uh the city has identified, um as, as you mentioned, the the four hundred and eighty total that are included in this cycle. So we do have enough sites within the city to, to meet that goal. Um and I know the initial number that the city was analyzing was, was up to a thousand uh potentially. So just to that point, uh I, I don't, I don't, and I'll let Jill uh go into more detail on the coastal uh zone, um as she is a, a far better expert than I. But uh it does look like we have enough sites that would potentially um allow for for that development to happen still with, within that zone. I believe all of those sites were taken into consideration in the zone, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna hand it off to Jill to better uh give that detail. Love the detail, excuse me.
Thanks, Mike. Um yeah, that's correct about the total number. Um the selection of the sites, however, um I, I think it's this, this commission um knows we, we did a lot of work during the land use plan update to find appropriate places for housing development that would not be constrained by um or, or have any negative impacts on coastal resources, um public coastal access that would be um in locations that were not um subjected to uh significant hazards. And so that is really why we cove down our sites to what we, we believe are the best ones in that they have um very little contact with coastal resources or buffers can be more than adequately maintained. And so we are able to comply with all of those policies in uh Chapter Six Natural Resources. Um we're not bringing forward any sites that can't be developed um in, in the sense of uh they would have to have some kind of compromise made relative to um biological resources. That's not going to be included in your housing element. We've talked about the um it's not a compromise, it's um the approach is to harmonize coastal access, the coastal resource preservation as required by the Coastal Act. So harmonizing the Coastal Act requirements that we do not question with the needs of the community, the happiness of the community in the context of state housing law. And we think you can do that. Uh there's enough sites that are uh really well located, uh predominantly in the, the town center area that um are not going to um have a conflict with, with those Coastal Act requirements.
Yeah, so, so my, my uh, my can, I'm glad to hear that. Without being too specific about any sites uh at this stage, I do see some concerns that seem inconsistent with uh some of the understandings I have heard from uh experts. So I could be totally wrong about that, and I defer to the experts, but I, I think we all should. Um and I wanna be sure I understand exactly what uh, what the coastal resources are and to be sure that uh, uh in the event that they have had some kind of unpermitted development, that we are treating them as they should have been treated and not having lost protection because of unpermitted development on the site. Um I do believe that there are some instances of that within the sites that have been selected. The next question I had was um with respect to um the ADUs, I was delighted to hear that the ADUs uh that we have a basis for incorporating ADUs into our thinking. And I wanna be, I wanna have a, at some point, I wanna have a better understanding of how we're doing it. I understood that it was based on what's been produced so far. I know that there have been a lot more applications as opposed to what measure D would allow. And I'm also aware, uh I mean, I think I, I learned that um the, some of the rules have allowed a pretty high level of um additional uh development on existing single-family lots, right? I seem to remember the number being that uh it might be possible to uh divide something into four and then have ADUs potentially on those. So I wanna be sure I understand the calculations that we're using when we uh, when we get there. And I'm not asking for them tonight, but I would like to see them before we, and I'm sure you'll provide them, before we're asked to make an assessment of it. And I know we'll all be taking a very close eye uh to understanding that.
Um yeah, acting chair, I think you'd get to uh respond to this a little bit right now, just to make sure um everyone's on the same.
That's good. I'm good with that.
Great, thank you. Uh so the ADU map is prescriptive and it's easy. Um we are told how to do this and it's uh benefit to the city. Um so we are allowed to take an average of the production of the ADUs for the last three years. That means they were built. Um so we, we obviously are, that's been growing and that's clear in our numbers. Um but once we take that average, then we can multiply it by eight because the housing element cycle is eight years. And that is how we get uh a number that HCD will accept, um provided that it appears to them to be a uh stable um baseline that uh the trend line is going in an upward direction, or at least a flat, um that it's not uh going to be tapering off. Um then from there, we are also um given uh some rules about how to distribute the ADUs into the different income categories. And that is from some research studies that were done for our area. And all of the jurisdictions in Seminole County will be distributing their units the same way. And uh it's appropriate for us to simply um clarify this. And I think it's uh, in reality, the numbers actually look very reasonable. Um and do you wanna clarify that um we don't have a lot more ADU applications than measure D allocations? There's just been um, just a very few number of ADUs that have not received measure D allocations. And it was predominantly uh ADUs that are coming in with a new single-family home. Um I think there's only, I, I can only think of one right now. There's, there's maybe a couple ADUs in and of themselves that did not get allocations. One of them was completely not ready. And so I don't wanna leave the impression with anyone that ADUs aren't getting accommodated through measure D. Um the, the vast majority of them happen.
Okay, thank you. I stand, I stand corrected. I, I thought that, uh I knew that there were a couple. But I appreciate the clarification that HCD is asking us to look at the average, which at some level is unfortunate because I think our numbers are gonna be going up into the
They are, yeah, we know.
And, you know, I don't know if there's a soft edge there somewhere, but uh I think that's incredibly unfortunate if there isn't.
We're just glad we can count them at all. Um in the past, they, um, they were uh very hard to get credit for. So this is a, a significant change uh with your, your second fiberina of two hundred and forty units doubling to four eighty and being able to count uh, uh about a hundred of them for ADUs is really helpful. It, it's um adjusting us to um not really have this be such a, such a big bump up.
And uh, okay, yeah, uh so zoom, sort of panning back out, um this is a housing element. It's one of the elements of our general plan. General Plan Law says all of the elements have to be consistent, right? They have to harmonize. And I know that we have other elements, uh not just the LCLUP, but um the green infrastructure. Um uh I believe it's an element, maybe it's a plan. Uh it's a, it's a plan. It's not an element, okay? So um trying to understand whether our green infrastructure plan is consistent with what we're drafting will be helpful for me. I'll be looking in, in general, along with other aspects um of, of the other elements of the land use plan. Because I think we've recognized the need for uh addressing green infrastructure. Uh location downtown is really good. Where we're using raw land, I wanna be sure that we understand that we're that there are other ways that we might consider using the land that would be better, that would allow us to relocate, that would drive us to decision to relocate some of that housing to other spots. But that's not to say I think it is. It's to say I don't know. We also have come to recognize that there are uh aspects of our city where we haven't recognized some of the hazards that we face. And I wanna be sure that as we plan to address those hazards, that we don't make decisions that occupy a space that might be more urgently needed for one of those hazard mitigation problems. And I'm not saying they are. I'm saying each site needs to be seen that way. It needs to be studied that way. So that we are operating with any of our uh elements of our uh general plan in a silo. And this has been a very housing-focused presentation. It's entirely appropriate. I want to be sure that those tendrils that where it interacts with these other aspects, um conservation, visitor access, um not precluding hazard opportunities, and where the, where the green infrastructure plan approaches, um the greenhouse gas element, I, I can't remember, that we do not lose track of the need to harmonize those. I'll be watching closely for that. Um I think those are my comments uh for now. I, I look forward to seeing the slides. And uh I'll, I would like to be able to provide more comments later, but that was my immediate reaction. Thank you again for the presentation and for the time, Chair Hernandez.
As always, Dr. Benjamin, I appreciate the very thoughtful feedback. Um Commissioner Riddick?
Yeah, I, I don't have any clarifying questions. Are, are we beyond that into deliberations now or, or more free-ranging discussion?
I have a couple of questions myself that I'd like to get it, get in.
Please, please do, be patient.
So um I understand the desire to look at the mobile home parks with um uh focus, and I think that emergency is, is the word I think I heard in terms of planning process. I worry about giving focus to the mobile home parks or priority over other development in the context of, you know, things I've heard about and read about where mobile homes are being bought by private equity and other entities, and they're being moved from low-income housing to a fancier uh fancier uh housing. It's no longer low income. Just wanna make sure that we're not setting ourselves up for creating more housing stock that's not serving the intended purpose. So the first question is, do we have safeguards in place to protect that housing um and keep it from being um re-appropriated from affordable to other buckets? And uh I'll stop there and, and with that question, and Jill, see if you or staff have any answers on that.
So I, I've, I'll, I'll take the first step on, on answering that question, uh acting chair Hernandez. Thank you for the, the question highlighting the, the mobile home park. Um so, so my understanding um there is, is, is that although there, there may not be uh natural requirements, staff is looking into mechanisms that, that would include a potential D restriction for the site that would preserve affordability a bit more long-term. Um that being said, uh staff's like typically staff's expectations of, of, of a mobile home park. Um although, uh and this is a term uh used in, in the affordable housing circles, is that uh there are, there is housing in our, our housing stock that tends to be naturally affordable, um that is offered at, at a lower, lower rate. Um I, although we can't guarantee that would be the case on a, on the mobile home park if there aren't D restrictions included. Um we, we would expect the, the affordability to be lower than um say a single-family home with a similar number of bedrooms. Um that being said, I know staff is, is looking into um and any mechanisms we can explore that would, would include uh affordability such as D restrictions, and I'll, I'll let Jill add to that. Um if there's anything missing.
I think the only thing I wanna add is that we um acknowledge the comment we're also concerned about it. That's what we're looking into. Thank you.
Yeah, um I'll, I'll come back to that during our um, our comment or discussion period. Have we looked at expanding the definition of downtown? Uh I mean, there's areas that downtown is kind of this strange beast um that was drawn through the original measure D. Um it strikes me that what is effectively the downtown today, or what will be in the near future, has shifted over time. And so for the purposes of these bonus allocations, you know, where are we at with looking at potentially changing the definition of the downtown? So that, you know, we can bring things into the, to the core. I think city council has given us direction to get more affordable housing, to put things that are in the core, core and walkable areas. But wh- what are we doing, or is there anything we can do um with respect to expanding the definition of downtown? So that we can, you know, get more affordable housing in the areas where I think city council would like it.
Sure, um I'm just gonna cover that. I'm gonna, if you don't indulge me, I'm gonna share a map or two here. Um, because I think it helps tell the story. Um, so this map, uh, the orange highlighted areas are the city's old redevelopment area. And the Measure D, um, ballot, the ballot measure itself, um, that voters saw included this map. So this is what we have to use right now for those bonus allocations. And you can see there's quite a bit of overlap of, um, uh, in particular, the, um, north downtown as we identified it in, uh, the land use plan and the very southern portion. Um, we're missing some bits in the middle here. And then there's some extra pieces that really, um, don't make sense to us as being, um, part of the downtown, such as the side of the, the Sam plant. I think at the time it was, um, being looked at for a courtyard and was, um, fulfilling, um, some of that that kind of criteria for what it's for, an appropriate site within the redevelopment area. I mean, it flipped over to the, uh, town center boundary, which is what was, um, approved in your land use plan. I, I don't know if you can, these colors are pretty, pretty light. Um, the green up at the north end here, we named this north downtown. It includes the pedestrian plan development and it includes eight eighty stone pine, as well as some of the other housing sites that we, um, actually talked about tonight. Heritage downtown is in the middle. And then south downtown is this, um, a lot of the color down the bottom. And it fills in those, those gap areas. So what are we doing, um, now that we have remembered what the differences are between uh, the old redevelopment area and the town center boundary? Um, absent ballot measure, we can't change the boundaries of downtown. Now, uh, there are some other options, however, and we've, we've talked about them. Your Measure D, uh, rating system, uh, can be amended, provided it, any amendments to it don't conflict with the ballot measure language. So for example, you could have a rating system that gave more points to a development that is located in town center, um, even if it's not in the downtown. Now, it wouldn't be subject to those, um, bonus allocations, but it might compete better. So those are kind of, um, probably the lowest hanging fruit for how to address it. Um, right now, your Measure D ranking system, uh, grants quite a few points for property look, properties that are located, uh, with a lot of, um, community amenities near them. And you saw that in spring where, um, properties that are more centrally located tend to rank higher already, as it is. Um, that they, it didn't pick up all of the, all of the town center properties. So there's more to think about with this. Um, yeah. I hope that got.
No, that's super helpful to bring us back to where we are. We have policies that say this is what downtown should be. But short of a ballot measure, we can't change the definition of what downtown is for the Measure D bonus. We can change the way that the Measure D, the City Council can change the way that Measure D points are allocated, um, but, but that's, uh, that's not for the bonus. That's just for prioritization and pushing stuff closer to the defined downtown core. Okay, that's really helpful for me. Um, are there any, um, other clarifying questions from, uh, members of the commission? For some reason, I'm stuck in a mode where I can only see two people at a time. So, um, all right, um. Uh, I'm going to, uh, go, uh, start with Commissioner Gossett again and see if you have any, if you'd like to start the discussion.
Sure, thank you. And I want to thank, uh, say, uh, welcome to Mike. Um, glad that you were presenting to us tonight. You did a really nice job. And thank you, uh, both Mike and Jill for, uh, putting together a really nice staff report. I, uh, did get to visit the twenty-one element, um, website. And I watched a couple of their, uh, webinars. Well, the one webinar I watched was Rena, Rena, Rena. And it was very informative and I, um, uh, I, I appreciated what they were doing to try and educate us about housing. I, um, in general, I'm pleased to see that the Kel, uh, five, five-five-five Kelly is coming forward with a nonprofit, um, that's willing to develop the site. Uh, and I hope things move forward in a positive fashion in terms of funding, um, so that the, um, project can move forward in some fashion. I'm in favor of, um, housing that is in the town center and would love to see redevelopment of property if that was possible. I don't know if there's sites, uh, downtown that could be redeveloped. Um, and basically that's it. I, I'm, um, looking forward to learning more about the housing element plan. Thank you.
Commissioner Riddick?
Thank you, Acting Chair. And thanks to Mr. Noche and Director Ikas for this presentation. You know, um, the four hundred and eighty units is a big Rena number, but it's exciting. I know it's early innings yet, but it's exciting to see the promise of the, of the sites that you all presented and shared with us tonight. You know, the pedestrian site, the mobile home parks, the stone pine, uh, property and five-five-five Kelly. I was, I was intrigued by the, the, uh, comment, Jill, that you made about being allowed to include up to a hundred ADUs in, in the Rena number. And it made me think back on our discussion of ADUs over the last two or three years, I guess now. And, um, and I know that this, this may be irrelevant to meeting the Rena number because you, you told us a minute ago that the, 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 we'll be told how those are going to be, uh, categorized in the various income levels. But I know during our ADU discussions, we, we spent a certain amount of time on what tools the city has or might want to think about for pushing, for incenting uh, ADUs more towards serving, uh, uh, truly affordable housing, low income and maybe even very low income. So, uh, as with, uh, Acting Chair Hernandez's comment about, uh, the, the promise of mobile home parks sometimes being sabotaged by, by them not being as affordable as you would think. I'd, I'd like us to be, to have a sharp, uh, eye on the, on the ADU opportunity and to think about, um, if there are uh, existing and, and new tools that we could use for that kind of incentive. That would, that would be, uh, that would be a good thing in the community. That, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Great. Commissioner Benjamin?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so this is exciting work. Um, I hope that the, if my questions seem sharp, uh, it's not that I'm not enthusiastic. It's that I think it's better to ask the hard questions early and get through them. Um, and, um, I think collaboration will be helpful to the extent we can. Um, I want to, uh, view each of these sites in their context because I think it could inform some of the trade-offs that I'm concerned about. And I'm delighted to hear that we're not, we're not expecting they need to make some of those trade-offs between other priorities. But I think a, a full discussion about that is warranted to support that assertion in several cases. Um, and I, I'm, uh, pleasantly surprised to hear, uh, the evolution of things at, uh, Stone Pine. That was not what I was expecting. So, um, that's interesting. And I think it's likely to be instructive in understanding how those trade-offs work. Um, Mike, you weren't here for that conversation, but the planning commission took a, a position that there were, uh, additional resources, um, habitat for listed species. The, the, uh, City Council, uh, reconsidered and decided that that was not a priority. And to my knowledge, no one appealed it to the coastal commission. And I think that, um, that is where we are with respect to that instance of coastal resources. And perhaps that's a template that we're looking at again. I don't know. Um, but I, I do think it warrants a, a good understanding. The hazard question is more opaque to me, again, focusing on, uh, the stone pine parcel. The first time the application for the courtyard came up, um, staff will recall that I laid my markers down of concern about dam inundation and flood. Um, and I'm interested in understanding it better. I, I believe staff shared some of those concerns. So I'll be interested in understanding how, how we got through that. And, um, again, you know, harmonization with some of these other aspects. Um, safety, our model of how we're going to change what we think are unsafe today. Those are really worthwhile and are not, it's important to not see them as, um, you know, tax under the vehicle of moving our plan forward. But rather making sure we, we are not looking at some of our most vulnerable kinds of housing and putting them in harm's way. Or putting those projects in places where context might make impacts, adjacent impacts to new housing significant. So I appreciate what's been done. I'll be looking forward to, uh, studying the, uh, the diagrams more clearly and, uh, getting a clear view of, um, what our obligations are, not just moral obligations to provide the housing, but also the legal obligation to understand what produce means produce in the context that it was presented. Because, um, both are important. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Benjamin. Um, I'm blown away by having been a part of the L U P policy process. We put in place policies. We've got our land use plan approved and now city staff are taking the initiative to drive forward and execute those policies. They're, they're going after worker, farmworker housing on farmland. They're going after, um, school staff housing on school land. And they're aggressively pursuing all the options available to us. I, I applaud this work. And I think, um, it's pleasing to have been a part of this process, but I know city staff are the ones doing all the work. The, I do have concerns about affordable housing being pulled out of the affordable housing stock. And I would like to see aggressive policies put in place, um, around, um, around protection of that and then keeping, you know, keep deed restrictions or other mechanisms that, you know, our city staff will do the homework, I, I'm sure, and come up with good recommendations. But I think we need to be uh, aggressive in protecting affordable housing. I think we are dealing with unnatural market circumstances with the way that homes are being purchased by private equity and corporations. And I think as a citywide policy, I, I'd like to see policies that dissuade, um, you know, uh, it's, it's unfair to just target the private equity crowd, but it's, you know, it's, it's, there are policies that are taking housing out of stock and they're putting it into, um, something it wasn't intended to. So I would love to see if we can, you know, learn from some of our smart, wealthier cousins, um, who are thinking about these things in larger cities and, and apply some of these forward-thinking concepts in our community. Uh, and I'm sure we'll see exciting and thoughtful, uh, ideas come forth. But I, 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 I think this is good. Um, I do take to heart the concerns about five, five-five Kelly. I think I got the address right. Um, the height of it. But I mean, if I look at the similar situated senior housing that's on Arnold and Main Street, you know, it's about the same size and, you know, we're not obstructing a great deal there. There's already a humongous gymnasium across the street. I do think we need to be mindful of view sheds and view corridors. But, um, you know, this is probably a really good place to put, uh, affordable housing and, um, you know, and hat, hats off to Alice for stepping forward and coming up with a proposal. Um, I think it's, it's nice to see community organizations take such an active role. So I, I, you know, my feedback on that project is it, it, you know, from what I've seen so far, I, I think it's, um, it's consistent with other types of projects like that that have been built in the city. And it provides a much-needed, um, service or, or housing stock to a very important segment of the community. So, look, more of it, um, you know, I think you guys have given us, you, you've met the needs that we have to meet for this. I think in future discussions, would love to look at other properties. I'm not going to name any specific properties here, but I think, you know, down the road, it'd be great if we can start thinking about other things we can do and other areas we can explore. But certainly we've satisfied the requirements at this point and, um, I'm very pleased with the work that you've done here. Any other feedback or comments or questions from my commissioners? Yep, Commissioner Benjamin?
Yeah, thank you. And I'm, I'm glad you mentioned five fifty-five, uh, you and the other colleagues because I, I agree with you that, uh, while it's a fairly tall structure, during the L C P, uh, update, when we were talking about densities and how to implement the idea of, uh, increased, uh, concentration of growth in the town center. I, I remember that we were entertaining, uh, allowing some of the buildings downtown to get taller with the thinking that that view shed had pretty much been consumed. I mean, if you're downtown or if you're on Highway one, you're looking at a gym. I don't remember being able to look at the ridge line at that point. And if that's the case, you know, higher buildings maybe, uh, were a, a, a better approach. I also recall we were talking about the densification, uh, in all of downtown as opposed to just the center of downtown. And, um, I'm, I'm interested in whether we've identified and then ruled out, um, as infeasible options, uh, in those areas. And so that's not, that's not to say I'm not happy with what we've got. I just want to be sure that we've turned over those stones and looked and said, yeah, there's nothing we should be pursuing there at this time. So thank you again for the work and I look forward to, uh, working through these questions.
Just gonna take a quick look. Uh, yeah, I'm stuck in a, a strange view here. So we'll see if there's any other feedback. Commissioner Riddick, any other feedback from you?
No, thank you, Chair Hernandez.
Commissioner Benjamin, your hand still raised? Okay, Commissioner Gossett?
No, I'm, I would, no more comments. Thank you.
So I think at this point, uh, Jill, is there anything else that you want to, any other feedback or comments you want to respond to at this point?
No, thank you for this input. We, um, when, I, I do want to acknowledge that there are multiple other sites in downtown that are, um, either vacant or, um, underdeveloped. Um, and this is in response to both Commissioner Gossett and Commissioner Benjamin's comments. Uh, it's just a hearty note to acknowledge the significance of five-five-five Kelly or eight-eighty stone pine or the school district set. They're publicly owned properties and, um, in particular for the city properties, we do not own very much land that is appropriate for housing development. So there really aren't any substitutes for something like five-five-five Kelly. Um, which is why you're, you're seeing the proposal the way that it came in. And, um, when we come back to you with a map and more information about the housing sites, we'll, we'll be happy to discuss, uh, their relationship to coastal resources or their, um, orientation to, um, hazard risk. Um, this isn't something, the housing element is not a place where we're going to work out all the details for how to put green infrastructure on a property. Uh, these properties are going to be required to develop in accordance with all of the city's policies. So I, I think we, I just want to make sure that we're, we're right at this level where we're just identifying appropriate housing sites, which are the very ones that we frankly already looked at in, in our land use plan. So I'm happy to follow up with any, uh, commissioner that wants to, um, look more at any particular site. Um, I'm especially intrigued, um, and, um, wanting to know if Acting Chair Hernandez will meet with us if he has some other sites in mind that I didn't come out in this discussion. if he has some other sites in mind that I didn't come out in this discussion. You, you've got us on the edge of our seats. So anyway, thank you very much. We have a lot more work to do and we will rely on you to make sure that we are working with our community. We do expect to have a lot more participation going forward. This meeting agenda went out to over a thousand email addresses. We have a very robust list of interested parties for the Planning Commission. We also have a big list of interested parties for the Housing Element. And we will always send those materials out to both, both lists and advertise this in English and Spanish in our e-news as we, as we move along. So you should be prepared to have a lot more public comment. And we will get to know our interpreters, Victor and Nicholas, who are, who are here tonight. We appreciate them being here. They will provide translation services of all tasks for us as we, as we move along. And
Okay.
That's all we have, thank you.
So at this point, I think we, we don't need to take any action and we can just close this item? Okay, very good. All right, so now we move away from the agendized items and we have our Planning Director's Report.
All right, thank you. Your agenda forecast for August, August ninth, you will have a public comment period. Essentially, it's, it's more of a study session than a public hearing on the draft EIR for the Hyatt. An applicant is preparing to reinstall our revamped story poles. I just want to make a note that the site is subject to a bit of wind and that he's tried different things to have really good quality story pole installations. The flags that he tried last time really got beat up, so he's going to try something new. And we're just trying to make sure that the ridge line is very well delineated and all the corners of the buildings and we're doing, are messed with this particular installation to make it meaningful to the community. The same meeting, we think we're going to have two murals for you to consider. And one of them is coming through a city process for a mural on the side of the Punya Market. And the other one is a installation that would go on the south side of the, excuse me, the north side of the building that fronts on Mac Dutra Plaza. And it would be sponsored by Seacrest School. So there's, it's really amazing timing to, to be looking at two, two murals that will frame the same public space. The one for us will be going to the Architectural Advisory Committee on Thursday. The other one won't go to the AAC because it has its own selection committee and review committee that was established for a special review of that project. In addition to the ninth, August twenty-third, you continued an item to a date certain. That was the Caltrans variable message sign. We'll be bringing that back to you as directed in a motion with, you will, you will have the findings for approval and the findings for denial and the whole body of the record and everything you need to evaluate this. And we hope that we'll have the full commission, I think that will be great. I'd like to spend a minute giving you an update about the short-term rental ordinance. This was, I think, a little bit alluded to in your discussion tonight about corporate ownership and the loss of housing stock. And it's something that we've been really concerned about with short-term rentals and other, other kinds of property activity that we see. The ordinance was scheduled to go before the Coastal Commission for a certification hearing at their August meeting. Staff, your city staff, has asked the Coastal Commission staff for another month or two. We don't want to put it off very far, but we wanted a little more time because we understand that Coastal Commission staff is concerned about three components of the city's short-term rental ordinance and we would like to defend it. First of all, they are, they've expressed concern about the primary residence requirement, which is foundational to the ordinance. They've also informed us that they are concerned about the sixty-night cap on unhosed rental nights. That was, this, this commission recommended ninety nights to City Council and City Council lowered it to sixty. I will note sixty's pretty low and I don't know if the commission has ever approved an ordinance with that limit. However, unhosed rental nights are not limited at all in Hackney Bay's proposed ordinance. And we want to make that real clear in our presentation materials. And then the third item, I'm, I'm actually a little bit less concerned about. They, they would like to lift or raise the occupancy cap. The number of guests is capped at eight in the ordinance as adopted by City Council. And they, the Coastal Commission got some input that there are some larger homes that, you know, with five or more bedrooms where they have room for parking and they have room for more guests and they believe that they can still comply with all of the kind of good neighbor policies and the impact requirements, including the water use that, that you brought forward in your review. And so we just want folks to know that the ordinance as adopted by council is being really carefully reviewed by Coastal Commission staff. They originally recommended approval with very minor modifications. Then they continued the item and put out an addendum to their staff report citing all those concerns that I just reviewed. They are still accepting public comment. You know, a lot of our community members aren't as engaged in it now because we aren't having hearings with, with this commission or with your council. But public comment to Coastal Commission is an important thing and we're happy to receive it and convey it to the commission or it can be submitted directly to commission staff. Let's see, I have a few more notes on this. Those are the high points. We'll let you know when the date is reset. And if you have any concerns, input, or would like to talk about the ordinance with us, feel free to do so. And of course, the commissioners are also more than welcome to submit their comments about the ordinance if they wish to, to the Coastal Commission. And that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Jill, and thank the city staff for two informative presentations. We've continued the dialogue. Are there any, speaking of dialogue, are there any communications from my fellow planning commissioners? Commissioner Benjamin, I see that your hand is raised.
It is raised, I'll lower it now, but I am, I do want to talk. So two things, first, I'm going to be absent for the the meeting, the first meeting in September, I think that's September thirteenth. As I mentioned to Jill in an email earlier today, I intend to be in a, a national park in Colorado with great, with great hiking trails and no cellphone signal at that time. So you guys have a great meeting without me. There's a possibility in October that I may miss a meeting, but I haven't nailed that yet, so stay tuned. And on a Saturday note, I want to report, as many of you know, we've lost one of our own today. I was surprised to learn of Harpo Marx's passing. And thought, to the extent that we all recognize that Harpo, you know, in this town, there are people who are not, you know, city council members or district representatives or highly politicizing figures who make a difference in the quality of our community, the camaraderie of our community and establish places where good, constructive, thoughtful conversations can occur. And the Cafe Society is such a place and Harpo was such a person. So I'd like to suggest when it's time to adjourn that we adjourn in memory of Harpo Marx. That's all.
Commissioner Gossett?
My, no communications, but I do echo what Commissioner Benjamin said about Harpo. It was very sad to see someone who would bring the community together in many different ways right on Main Street across from City Hall. So you're right, it's a big loss for us. Thanks for bringing that up, Commissioner Benjamin.
Commissioner Reddick?
Yeah, it's, thank you for your articulate remarks about Harpo. Jimmy, that's a sad and shocking thing. He was, he was a, one of the, one of the people and his place was one of the places I always think about when I think about downtown. On another point, Commissioner Benjamin noted that he would be absent on September thirteenth and I also will be. I've had longstanding plans to be in Europe if all goes well, then.
Thank you for letting us know.
Yep, thank you.
I had that one down, but thank you, just to make sure.
I will also mention that I have potential work-related travel on the thirtieth of August. I'm not sure yet if I'm going to be on a plane at the time of our, our meeting, but
It remains the week before on the twenty-third, so you're okay.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that, that ends up being the fifth Thursday, I said fifth Tuesday, excuse me, or one, two, it's the, it's the
It's the fifth.
Yeah, it is the fifth, sorry, just looking at it, yes. So you're, you're
We wouldn't have an, we wouldn't have an item on the thirtieth, it would be on the twenty-third, is that the fact?
The ninth and the twenty-third of August are the next two meetings, yeah. So it'll be okay.
Okay, great, all right. On that note, I would like to publicly thank Harpo for creating a place of dialogue and community and very good coffee, where I know many, many public discussions have been had. So thank you, Harpo. And thanks to his family, hopefully they can keep his store, his shop running. And it's, it's an important part of our community. So with that, I'd like to get a motion.
I move that we adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Harpo Marx.
Can I get a second?
I will second that.
Can I get a roll call vote?
Yes. Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddick?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
And Acting Chair Hernandez?
I
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, good night, everybody.
Take care, everybody, good night.
Night.